This is deep focused work. The technique that I'm introducing is called Pomodoro technique. This was invented in nineteen eighties by Francisco Cirillo. He was really fed up of not getting things done, which we all face and which we all experience, right? We want to study a lot, we want to get things done, get lot done, but then we are not doing it, right? Actually, deep work, when you really do the focused work, you are feeling de-stressed. Not distressed, de-stressed, right? Stress comes in or tiredness comes in when there is resistance in your mind. When you are doing something, but your mind is somewhere and you want to get back. So that actually causes a lot of fiction in your mind and causes tiredness. So what is this Pomodoro technique? It is twenty-five minutes of or a chunk of focused work, getting things done. It is called full or zero, okay? Full means you are taking the chunk of time, determine whether you want to do it for twenty-five minutes or fifty minutes, fifty minutes chunk is a very good idea. And put the timer on and just do the work, just do it, do nothing but only the work. What do I mean by doing nothing is no checking cell phones, not getting distracted, not eating, not going to even restroom. If you need to go to restroom, then go to restroom and then come back and do before you start the Pomodoro technique, okay? I'm planning to do these sessions with you this week during our Zoom live sessions and continuing that even today, I have a plan. And also next week and the following week, three weeks straight, I would like to do with you so that you can see the impact or you can see the change in your second unit scores, second part scores, okay? So what happens during this full or zero, right? When you have set the timer and you're working, that is called hyper-focus. What are you doing explicitly? You are only working on the project that you have taken up, whether it is a course or cleaning up a to-do list or journaling or relaxing. If you want to do nothing, then do nothing exactly, do nothing at all, not even checking your cellphone, right? Just do nothing, just stare with your open eyes, stare at the sky or stare at the ceiling, whatever it is. If you want to relax, right? So you set the timer and you do it. And during that zero period, that means you are explicitly not studying or explicitly not doing anything. What happens when you have this kind of hyper-focus and scatter focuses guys? You have next level ideas jumping in in your mind. When you give that kind of break to your mind, then you have diamond cutter ideas that pop in in your mind, okay? So that is what I want you to experience. I highly recommend fifty-minute time chunks, but if you cannot stay for fifty-minute time chunks, sitting still and studying and doing the work, then yeah, go ahead and reduce it to twenty-five minutes. Then do a five-minute break and then twenty-five minutes again and then try fifty minutes. Try fifty minutes once and see how it feels like, okay? Does it sound good? Is it clear so far? I do read lot of books for you guys. My favorite one is Cal Newport. He's the author of this series of books he writes, study hacks books he writes. He has also a blog, if you do not want to buy books, in fact, don't buy books. You can borrow these from Valencia Library or County Library. You all pay taxes and government owes to you, yeah? You can, you can get some books and these are the books that I read for you. And this is one chapter that I like to read for you when you are taking a break. You are explicitly taking a break, right? And what happens when we take longer breaks or the break extends? We have that little guilt feeling, right? And then fear sets in and we feel like we are neglecting by taking a break. So we decide not to take breaks and we decide to study like a day before entire forty-eight hours or seventy-two hours straight. No, that's not how it should go, life should be fun, okay? So he says, Cal Newport is saying in this chapter, schedule your free time, okay? This is chapter number twenty-three and I'm going to read this chapter, which is a small book. It's palm-sized book and it is just two pages. So let me quickly read it for you, I would like you to enjoy. I want you to enjoy this session also, okay? So relax and enjoy. Chapter number twenty-three, schedule your free time. Free time is both a blessing and a curse for a successful college student. On the one hand, most of your fondest memories will come from hanging around with your friends, talking, playing video games and watching indecipherable Japanese kids shown on the cartoon network, trust me, okay? That is what he is saying. On the other hand, it is dangerously easy to lose much productivity to the allure of recreation. That happens, right? You would be surprised by how simple it can become to convince yourself to take yet another big break, even when you know that you have a lot of work waiting to be completed. You could also find yourself suffering from an even worse problem, which is feeling guilty every time you try to relax, worry that there is probably some work you could be doing right then. You don't want to deal with either of these afflictions. Fortunately, there is an unconventional yet simple way to both avoid these problems and ensure that you get the perfect amount of rest and relaxation. Schedule your free time, he's saying, schedule your free time. Most people consider free time to be anytime when they are not explicitly working. All you need to do is flip this understanding and say that work time is anytime that you are not explicitly relaxing. That means you are working all through, but when you decided to take a break, simply chill. Really decide to chill and chill. That is when you get good amount of rest and you feel like to go back. And when you go back, you'll do good amount of concentrated consolidated work, okay? For example, when you create your schedule each morning, when you need to do two things. First, choose an end point for the day. You might say that ten PM is the end of your workday and from that point on, you will just relax until you go to sleep. Second, decide exactly when you are going to relax throughout the day. For example, you might decide that you will spend a half hour after lunch, watching TV, two hours in the afternoon to go to the gym and hang out with friends and an hour or two surrounding dinner to unwind. The rest of your time, you will be working, okay? As you move through your day, there will never be any question as to whether you should be relaxing. Either you are in one of your scheduled break periods or you're working. Not only does this cut down on impromptu breaks, but it can also increase your work ethic. Everyone works harder right before a scheduled reprieve, reprieve means forgiveness. By reversing the way you think about free time, not only you will work more, but when you do relax, you will relax better. There is no fear that you are being irresponsible or neglecting something important. Scheduling your free time may sound a little scary at first, but it shouldn't. You are not actually reducing or increasing the amount of free time you have during the day. You are just labeling and consolidating it so you can maximize the benefit of kicking back. Scheduling your free time is quite simply a win-win proposition and a great way to painlessly improve your productivity. Wasn't that awesome? Okay, so now what I want you to do is, I want you to give a list of things that you could do. Pomodoro is a technique when you sit down and getting the work done, right? But before that, I want you to prepare yourself. I want you to marinate yourself for study, right? When you manage chicken, it tastes good, right? Beef taste good when you manage it exactly like that. I want you to marinate your entire energy. How do you do that? Okay, so get a timer, get all the things that you need to study and put them in place. And if you really need the cellphone, then minimize it to the least possible. If somebody calls emergency, call them, hey, is it emergency? Can I call you back and put it away? Don't continue, don't aimlessly continue to answering the messages or even during the breaks. Don't, don't keep answering the messages, okay? During the break, you're relaxing, it's not message answering time, okay? So set like maybe you know fifty minutes and then ten-minute break and fifty minutes or twenty-five minutes, five-minute break, twenty-five minutes, ten-minute break and fifty minutes. This is how you will design. So after that, two hours time, just go ahead and answer all your phones. Maybe have lunch and spend time or relax for that half an hour or one hour that you have decided, okay? So put away your phone, get all the books, bring it to a place where you're going to study, okay? And then you're going to play some music in that room like focus music that I posted in the PowerPoint that I posted in the deep work section. If you open the PowerPoint, you have a list of things or you can search out yourself what you like, okay? Otherwise, I have a focus playlist that I have made, a Nalini focus playlist. I'm going to give that focus music playlist link to you and you can use that as well, okay? So it's up to you how you want to do. So when you go in there, I want you to start playing that music and then just tune into it. Let that energy absorb into the deep focus frequency music absorb into you. Set the timer and then for energy, some of you take coffee. Coffee might not be a very good idea, guys. Coffee actually gives jitters and makes your mind even more unstable. When you study and focus, your brainwaves actually go from beta to alpha waves and they are less energy waves and you have to be staying in there. You have to be staying in there in order to do it and soak it completely, yeah? So what I want you to do is keep playing the music and just do some activity, which is this activity that I want to teach you. Kathy, you have done this already with me. So Kim and Fabrielle, go ahead, start, we will do this, okay? The activity is like this, in order to get good amount of energy when you are about to start your work, you haven't started the timer yet, you have all the stuff in front of you, okay? And this is what you're going to do for good amount of energy. Hopefully, nobody is asleep. If anybody is asleep, just skip the first loud sound one, okay? I want you to take your hands out, let your heart, which is compressed between your shoulder bones and rib cage, let it, let it open up nicely, okay? Take your hands out and chin up, take a deep inhale and clap. And when you're clapping, chin down. I want you to do this at least six of them and just notice, continue, continue, continue clapping, guys. Open your hearts out and breathe in and chest out and hands out. Let that blood circulate your heart, let it pump. Awesome, keep breathing, okay? Now I want you to stop and notice. I bet you have some vibrations in your palms, right? This wakes you up. If you are unable to wake up in the morning, do this, guys. If you really need to wake up and you are unable to wake up because you know the night was really short and you are really sleepy, then do this, I'm telling you. You will be up, you will be awake, okay? And next one, I want you to do a series of claps, come on, closer to your heart and fast. Keep breathing, you need lot of oxygen for your brain to work. Your brain is an aerobic organ, that means it needs oxygen, not air, it needs oxygen. When a person faints, when a person faints, their brain has kind of given up, but their heart hasn't. Do you know that? Because heart is a muscle, it can ferment, it can work without oxygen for some time, but brain cannot. Brain is aerobic organ, it's an aerobic organ. It needs lot of oxygen, so you need to breathe deep as much as possible. And I want you to stop and relax and see, feel that your mind is feeling that focused mind is feeling those vibrations. That's energy. You cause blood circulation from the extremities of your body through all these blood vessels and nerves towards your brain. You're feeling it with your brain, right? And you're clapping, you feel the energy. I want you to do this in order to generate some energy, okay? Next, with the palm, open, other hand, making a fist. You're just hitting your palm to cause some energy generation, extra energy that you need. I hope you're not hitting yourself too hard, okay? The other one, the other hand. Six punches are good, don't punch yourself too hard, okay? You know how sensitive you are, so play accordingly on the top. The top here. Karate chop, this is how Bruce Lee used to do the karate chop, right? Break the boards, if you've done karate, I am karate black belt, by the way, I got it one and a half year ago. Yeah, at this age, I got my black belt, so it's not easy. You all can do this, definitely, super easy, right? Piece of cake. Between the fingers, interlacing the fingers, thumb to thumb curve, keep it nice and curvy, not too straight. Don't want hurt yourself. Do it gently as your body likes. Keep breathing, keep breathing, guys, wrist to wrist. Front of the wrist to front of the wrist, back of the wrist to back of the wrist. If you're too bony like me, then watch out. Okay, elbow, elbow curve, keep it little bent and do it at the elbow curve. Now you are stimulating your lymphatic system, guys. When your lymphatic system is active, your immunity is good, your energy is good, okay? You have good amount of energy flowing. Don't feel like you know your body has become too stiff. Underarm. Six taps on each. There's a famous technique called EFT tapping, near the bra strap, if you're a girl, otherwise below your underarm, your boy. Near the heart. On the top of your head. I'm telling you guys, this will generate so much amount of energy that you don't feel too antsy and you'll be able to sit at least for twenty-five minutes straight and get the work done in those twenty-five minutes. When the twenty-five minute timer goes off, then just take a break, zero, don't do any kind of studying, right? And relax, feel that energy. Count, count with me. Five, two, one, backwards, start. Five, four, three, two, one, start. Open your book and start reading. Open your work or open your computer and start doing the work that is due or whatever you need to take care of, okay? Today I did it, I did it from four thirty AM to eight thirty AM and I made some videos, I made three videos. I'll tell you what, a chicken came first or egg came first? Who knows the answer? You can unmute yourself now. Tell me who knows the answer, chicken came first or egg came first? You all know the answer, I bet. I'm telling you, you know the answer. We just think that we don't know because the way the question has been asked for so many years now, it just got into our mind that we don't know, it's a secret, know, we know. Does anyone know?
Is it the? Is it the egg?
But then where did that egg come from?
From another chicken?
Where did that chicken come from? That is how the loop goes, but I'm telling you, you all know the answer.
Oh.
Right, I made that video today. Yeah, I've been thinking about it for so long. We all are seventy to seventy-five percent water, agree?
Yes.
You're like. But then these are skin cells, if you, if you remove the skin and put it in a place, it will just collapse, you know that? The muscle, if you keep it separated, it will just collapse. If you're thinking that you're standing and you have all this attached to your skeleton, that's why it is standing, it's not true. You have two types of cells, wet cells and dry cells. And these wet cells, they all will flow away because they're seventy percent water, but why are they not flowing away? Everybody says drink water, drink water, yeah, but then why? Why should we drink so much water? Don't, we already have water, yeah, it evaporates, but then what is the necessity of it? Right, do you all know the origin of matter? When did that first atom form? When did that first molecule form? How did it form? When did the first cell form? How did the first animal cell and plant cell form? I made all these videos this morning. I'm so excited to share them because you all know the answer. In fact, your chapter six talks about it. You being biologist, you must know this, forget about biologist, aren't we all live living beings who are curious? We must know these, right? So yeah, I got the work done. I'm not teaching you because I want to teach you these, I have done it and it feels amazing. So how do you, how do I want you to do this? I want you to do it this way. Either start now, your deep work with me, I'm going to hang in here on Zoom. It is, what is the time now? Eleven thirty, yeah, almost eleven thirty-ish, okay? I'll keep my Zoom on, I'll keep my Zoom on till twelve thirty, at twelve thirty sharp. If you are, if you do not have any other classes, you are sitting at home. If you can manage to study with me an hour, okay? At twelve thirty, I want you to report back here in the chat saying that I finished my fifty-minute chunk of work. Okay, at twelve thirty, if you need a break, I'll start at eleven thirty and then we'll start, I will go on till twelve thirty. At twelve thirty, I want you to report to me. I'll start the timer at twelve ten. At twelve ten, I'll start the timer here and I'm going to do these sessions even after your live sessions this week and following week. And also I'm going to do this next week, Monday. I want you to decide whether you want to do it with me. If you want to do it with me, we'll start at eleven AM and we'll set the timer. I'll give you some more instructions on how to do it and we'll set the timer of twenty-five minutes whenever it starts and then we will do the work and we'll report back and we will talk. That is how it's gonna go, okay? Any questions, guys? Let me ask again.
If you recommend us listening to music when we are doing our work.
Okay, if you like listening to music, then yeah, play it, try it. I would say try with music, music actually helps you to cancel the noises. It is called noise reduction and it really helps if the people around are talking, speaking in other rooms or have TV and it binds you and also it reduces noise. That way it is very helpful, but if you think that itself is causing a distraction, then yes, turn it off. I would say first try it with music. There are some music which goes on for like fifty minutes or one hour, three hours. Play those, they are called deep focus music or binaural beats. If they are actually good, then yeah, make, make a choice, you choose what is good for you because I have heard from spiritualbeats.com owner that these binaural beats on YouTube, they are compressed music, so they are not actually fetching or they are not really helping, okay? So take a decision based on your choice or the kind of music that you have chosen, okay? And if you find anything really good that you like or you just want to share, we are going to be on Zoom anyways, doing the focus work. Yeah, share with me here and I can play that and see if everybody likes it, then I can forward it by email to all of you, yeah? Please do share, okay? Any other questions, guys? So we talked about what stops us from focusing, right? Mainly the cellphone, see, guys, you have to take a decision whether you want to put it away and not get distracted by it. I would recommend you to put it away if it is not essential for your studying or the work that you are doing. If it is required, then make sure that you tell yourself that, hey, you know, this is my time, I'm not gonna do it. And for noise reduction, I would suggest music, binaural beats and your own mind. I mean, that is a decision that you are making to be focused. So just maneuver your mind so that it's not happening. Now you have decided only twenty-five minutes or fifty minutes, get the work done and be happy. And again, it is de-stressing when you get the work done, right? And we saw this video of incredible power that is generated by focusing the sunlight through the convex lens. It can even melt a rock, guys, that much power is there in sun rays. We never thought that on earth you can melt a rock using sun rays. But this guy from Southern France Solar Furnace Research Facility has done this experiment and oh my God, it's amazing. You can just relate it, it's a very good analogy for what a mind can do, a focused mind can do, okay? It is your score, it is your life and it is your goal. Think about the goal, write a goal big, write down a big A, okay? Take a sheet of paper, write down a big A and just write and write and write over it and inscribe that in your memory that you're going to get an A in this class, okay? And B is also fine, B is not a crime, okay? B is not bad at all. Now you're trying for A and you know, if you don't mind getting a B, then it's fine, but you can strive for any. You can definitely strive for any with all the opportunities that I've given assessments and extra credit and all the study suggestions and activity sheets, pre-quiz sheets, all those things, you will be able to. Just recognize, guys, all these things, doubt, carelessness, physical laziness and illusion. All these things, all these things are, we created it. We can make our mind into a candle mind if we decide to make it, okay? If you decide to have a candle-like mind, one-pointed, then we can have it, okay? All you have to do is realize that it is my mind, it is my life, it is my focus, I'm going to focus. So it's all self-talk. You can use some self-talk suggestions in the morning if you like to tune yourself to condition your mind and. Understand that we all have great life and opportunities and the resources, make use of them, guys. And taking a break in between and emptying yourself of yourself, it reduces lot of stress and it gives you that next level ideas and lot of boosting energy when you come back, okay? These are all the music frequency that I like to play, there are different kinds for different people, different strokes for different folks. Use any of these that you like, you don't have to go by my choice, you can search out your own, but don't spend too much time, okay? Set a timer for ten minutes and say that I'm going to try out like five or six videos and see which one works for me. And just make a choice and bookmark that or put it in your playlist and just keep playing that, okay? Choose one or two if you like and something else that I came up with, track your focus. Guys, tracking your focus is really helpful, look at this. Are you able to see? Take a sheet of paper for the entire semester and label it track my focus and put a line across from left side of the page to right side of the page. You have the timer on, right? You have set it for, let's say, twenty-five minutes. So maybe after like twelve and a half minutes, you will track your focus even more, but put a little star there that this is twelve and a half minutes. In those twelve and a half minutes, if you had maybe one or two distractions, then put a line. And whenever you put a distraction line, double this line. Whenever you have a distraction, put a line and double that line again and again and again, right over that line. And you will see that you are going to intensify your focus every time you are making a double line. This is how you're going to discipline yourself. And at the end of the unit, check how your focus has been. If you have too many of these double lines, that means you train your mind to intensify your focus, which is a great thing, which is an awesome thing, okay? That is how I would suggest, have a snack and jacket and water at the place where you are studying so that you will not get up and when you get up, go get, if you do not want water there because that will distract you or that will be a good excuse for you to go, then yeah, don't put water there, don't keep water there. Make sure that you understand and crack what you are studying, okay? When you are with me, you have questions, we will be doing that, okay? I'll help you understand and crack next week, that is what I'm going to do, okay? This week I'll only train you how to be focused and do the deep work. But from next week, I'm going to take a little part, which is common for both biology and microbiology and I'm going to help you crack it, how my questions will be and how you need to understand the question and the concept and study the way it needs to be studied or absorbed the material. And please don't be in hurry to finish your work, make sure that you focus. And please don't be in hurry to finish your work, make sure that you focus, okay? And I don't know what is going on in your mind. I can't tell, right? It's only you, it's your mind, it's you, it's your focus, it's your goal. Only you can discipline your mind, no other, nobody else can. So you decide. Something that I want you to do while you are clapping is decide a goal. I want to get an A, I want to get an A, I want to get an A. When you keep saying it, guys, take a phrase or word, right? Achievement or success, just keep saying that word inwardly all the time during the day. Try this, guys, these are called switch words or rapidism. Just you are, your mind, you are soaking your mind with one word, success, A grade, A grade in biology, A in microbiology. You just, you're just going on saying it. When you keep saying it, what happens is you are going on thinking, right? And you start feeling it and you feel till you become it. You're leaving no choice, you're literally overriding your doubting mind. It actually becomes true when you don't leave any room for doubt. Okay, and when you start the work late, make a tiny list in front of you or in the book. And make sure that you finish that list. I want to get the notes done, I want to finish the PowerPoints, I want to listen to the video. Okay, so have that little list in front of you so that you are goal-oriented. Though you are becoming little antsy, getting antsy, you're still sticking to your chair, okay? So that was track my effort, not track my effort. And it's a very good thing if you visualize what you are doing it, you are enjoying it and you're feeling and you're getting it done. It's a very good feeling, guys, to get it done, yeah? And read the benefits and just do it. Count five, four, three, two, one, jump into action and just do it. It's Nike caption, right? Just do it. And you shouldn't take lot of pressure in order to get the things done. This is something else that I would like to show you. Guys, Valencia has distance learning tutorial, Learn Smart for Microbiology on your Megrahill website and cumulative tests on Biology, Master in Biology website. I would like to show you these, I would like you to work on some of these questions with me. I'll, hopefully, I'll be able to divide, divide you into rooms, break rooms and I'll be able to do it. So that is it, guys, these are, these are few things that I wanted to cover with you. And hang in here and start your work with me. I'll be here till twelve thirty, I'm not signing off, I'll keep the Zoom on. You can do an hour of study with me, but before that, go take a break and come back. It's eleven thirty-six, we can start around like eleven forty-five-ish. Take a break and come back and we'll start at eleven forty-five. You want to go ahead and do it, yeah, go ahead and start your work, but make sure that you are not getting distracted, okay? I am not gonna watch you, watch you, but I'm here, I'm here with you. I want to be with you. I want you to study the way it requires, the standard that this course requires. I do not want you to leave any excuses saying that I didn't know how to study. Everybody tells how to study, but nobody showed us how to study. Everybody says how to focus, but nobody showed us how to focus. There is more to this method, but then I do not want to give everything in this chunk. Any questions, guys?